We'll start with a prayer, with a pledge of allegiance. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give us assurance of what would pleasure you and what would benefit those who love, work in, and around our village of Hicksville. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see you here. Roll call please Cheryl.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Hart?
Pacrowski?
Here.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
President.
Thank you. You have the May 16th council minutes in your packet and the June 1st special council meeting minutes in your packet. As far as I'm concerned, you can approve them both at once if you...
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Roll call please.
Hedley?
Yes.
Pacrowski?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
You have the bills in your packet. You probably have already had a chance to look them over. Does anyone have any questions?
I saw where we paid $700-800 bucks for some pump, submersible pump, one of the pumps down at the sewer pump.
Did one fail Kent or is it...
That's because we moved from a gravity plant to a pump everything plant when we put the new one in.
Was that pump?
Oh yeah.
It was.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I would make the motion to approve the bills. Second.
Mr. Haley, Mr. Pacrowski moved and seconded to approve the bills. Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Pacrowski?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Thank you. There is a notice in the packet of a public hearing with the Board of Zoning Appeals. There'll be a public hearing for an application for a conditional use permit on Wednesday, June 15th at 4:00 in the zoning inspector's office at 108 North Main Street. The application submitted by Adele Davenport is a request to run an accounting business from her home at 121 Columbus Street. If you have an interest in that, I would just suggest that you attend the meeting. We have the park board minutes in the packet. Mr. Hart, are you here to report on anything else for the park board or answer any questions?
Nothing specific. I'm sure we will come to a meeting tomorrow and we'll have some record of that attended around 7:00.
Wow, great.
And also the road through the park is finished and don't move your car when you drive through the park.
It looks...
I think that's why we have record attendance.
It looks real nice. It looks nice. I actually like those planter boxes gone right now too.
Alan's driving on it, yeah. It's out there and right.
About 10 mile an hour of course. The speed bumps are real smooth too. I rode my bike, bicycle over them Sunday and they're real smooth.
Definitely are smooth down.
Mm-hmm.
They're still better.
The park looks real nice. It's nice to see it so busy.
It is very busy. Just from the time we hear of the baseball stadium situation, the building being moved quite ahead of graduation.
Yeah, the flowers look nice around the pavilion too.
Has there been any resistance to the drug testing for all of the park employees each
and every year? Does that come back?
Nothing that I've heard as far as that's been.
Cheryl, you hear anything?
Maybe I have it done.
Okay, thank you.
Have you heard anything how Regina Dalton's getting along with the lunch program that's going to start here mid-June?
I have.
Okay.
I know that she would really like volunteers from the community to help with that lunch
program. They serve all the kids that show up lunch at the park, at the pavilion, every Monday through Friday during the summer and then they have an activity. The library's coming I think on the Mondays and we may have swimming on Wednesdays, but they would love to have other volunteers from the community come and help with games or crafts or something in case anybody out there in TV land has some time on their hands.
It's a very big program, very busy and integrated.
Yeah. So does anyone have any other questions for Ron? All right. There are minutes from the beautification committee in the packet. They've been pretty busy. So then we'll go on to council committee. Yes, sir.
You skipped over Hicks TV.
Oh, I did.
And I was wondering, I spoke with Bill briefly as we came in this evening and a few of us spoke here before the meeting. Can we approve him to go ahead and get us some mics, get whatever it takes and get it so that people can understand what we're saying?
Hicks TV has money in their budget that they could do that, but also council would probably have some money in their budget for it also, but yeah, I think we should...
Can we authorize that? Give him permission?
We have a board meeting coming up this Saturday. I will get my board, I will go over with my board and I will see if I can, I will contact our equipment supplier and see if I can have him come over and take a look at our current system and make suggestions for upgrading the microphone system and get us a quote.
That would be excellent.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yep, we have council committee reports. I know you committee members have been really busy and I appreciate that. There's probably even more I could shove your way.
One thing I want to bring up, the ordinance committee met a couple months ago, maybe six months ago, about the work on burning. And on your table, some things that you want to throw out to council. The whole lettering is what they're thinking, hours being there, what's your thought? Everybody got a chance to read it? The one is, we're looking at no burning, only burning between 5:00 PM and 1:00 AM. Okay? And they cannot be left unattended for any period of time while burning, have to be put out. The committee's open for suggestions, want to get this thing taken care of, so I didn't want Troy to bring back the first reading until everybody was in agreement. So it's open.
I personally would like to do it sooner than later because by the time we have three readings in 30 days, it's somewhere to be over and the burning problem's going to go away and people can live the whole summer.
If there's anyone that wants to see this out in the audience? I don't know.
We've got to tell them.
Okay.
So they'll work.
All right.
My chief, Chief Ballinger, have you seen it? Chief Kramer?
And I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in the plan, but I know that I have, just while I'm controlling, I've seen people have campfire, or not campfires, but like winter roast in the afternoon, on more than one occasion. Just throwing it out there.
We always do when my grandkids are there, we always have hot dogs on the, then we put it out.
We thought about one day it cannot burn and so the committee kind of come up with this just to get the discussion started. So that's what we're looking at.
If everybody is satisfied with it, I guess Troy could bring the legislation back to the next council meeting. Would that be okay?
Do you have anything you want to add?
I would love to speak if you'd allow me to.
Yeah, please go up to the microphone if you would.
I appreciate all that you guys do. I am frustrated as a resident of Hicksville. I moved to this town 12 years ago. Tony and I built a home and we could have built it anywhere. I built it in the city of Hicksville because I thought the city of Hicksville would help protect me. I have a lot of allergies and I have a lot of breathing problems and I have a lot of trouble breathing smoke in the air, whether it's cigarette smoke or fire smoke or whatever. If you, I live on Chicago Avenue. If you drive past my house, most of my neighbors have fire pits. I have a neighbor that has an old traditional burn barrel and he burns from it. I have neighbors that, I have a neighbor right now that has stacked up tree limbs and will probably light them on fire for a big huge bonfire. Not one neighbor burns, they don't all burn at the same time. They all burn at different times. So what it creates for someone like me is never being able to be outside and I feel like a prisoner in my own home. Now, that's not fair to me, I don't feel. I brought to the ordinance committee and I appreciate the work that they did, I asked them to consider sharing the air because I've had it said to me a lot of times, you know, "I don't have a lake cottage and I can't go to the lake and so I am in my backyard." We, my, my family and I, we participate in our backyard. Me too. Me too. I don't have a lake cottage to go to. Matter of fact, I don't want to be around the lakes because they burn, but I can't be in my backyard because everybody burns around me and they all burn on different days and they all burn on different times. So, you know, I experienced burning in the evenings, I experienced burning in the afternoons. They don't put their fires out and they smolder, they don't put them out enough and I wake up just, just Saturday morning, I opened my doors up at 7:00 and it smelled really great and by 8:00 there was smoke coming in my doors. So I really would like you guys to consider this. I know people in town like to burn and I get it, I understand, it's a, it's an old pastime. Personally, I'm into health and wellness and I think it's a hazard for health. I've read a lot on it. But I would love it if you would consider sharing the air because I know there are other people like me in town that can't tolerate burning smoke and I sure do like Hicksville. I sure do like where I live, but I don't ever have an opportunity, I mean, I won't say ever, but there's many times where I just get forced back inside because somebody's burning, so.
Will this, as it's written, help you?
Um, partly, but no, I mean, I, I work every day, so if you consider 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM, that gives me Saturdays and Sundays. It'll help minimally. I also feel like the people in Hicksville aren't educated. I watch neighbors come into my community, into my, I wait, watch, I see people come into my neighborhood and they just don't understand. They're new to the, they're new to the town and they don't know. The, the particular fellow that has the big huge pile of leaves or, or tree branches, he's a new neighbor, great guy, cleaned his house up, did some landscaping, house looks great. He simply doesn't know that he can't torch that big huge pile of, of branches. So what's going to happen? He's going to do it, he's going to make me mad, I'm going to call the police, they're going to come down. Typically, the way the ordinance was, people always had marshmallows or hamburgers and said, "Oh no, we're out for recreational purposes, we're enjoying this," but that thing would burn and burn and burn and it'd smoke the next day. I think it would be great if the town could even maybe spend a section of the paper, maybe even educating people on what they can do and can't do because I honestly, I walk a lot in the town and I honestly think people just don't understand that ordinance. So it might help the police out if you would take a little bit of time to educate the people in the town. They might not get as many calls as what they do whenever you do set the ordinance. But it's a start. It's not a complete, I mean, it's not really sharing the air because I still don't really have, you know, from 5:00, from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM, if all my neighbors burn at a different time, I still can't be outside enjoying my backyard on any given evening, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming to explain all that to us.
What would you like to see?
Um, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that there's days that people could burn or there's days that they couldn't burn, maybe would be the appropriate wording. So I don't know what that would be, I don't want to state the days, but, and I know that's going to be a tough thing for people in town. I get it, I know people like to burn, but imagine if every neighbor around you had a foul animal smell, like in their yard, and they let that animal out and every time you went out in your backyard, it stunk so bad you couldn't be in your backyard because of the animal smell, so you went back inside. I mean, that's the thing I experienced, it's just with smoke. It just happens that some people really like it, some people don't really like it.
Can I ask you this? And this is me asking, not as a council member, just as me. If we did this and did a, an advertising campaign in the paper, more than just a little bird, something in there that tells what can and cannot be done, would that be a good start?
I think it'd be an excellent start. I mean, it would give me, it would be, give me time, on the weekends it would give me time during the day. Like I said, I work, so I'm not, I'm not home during the day. But, I mean, I would also like you to consider maybe possibly one night, maybe one weeknight and one, one weekend night, which I know is hard because everybody has their favorite times to enjoy their backyard, but again, I do too.
Well, and, and what you have said with, with educating, I think that that might slow things down quite a bit. Because like you said, there are a lot of people that, they don't know that you can't burn.
They don't.
You can't openly burn. And Mick, I agree with you 100% that we should move on this now. I don't know if we can do it as an emergency, can we? It's a health issue?
Let me raise a question. What's council's feelings on, let's say, share the air is a nice, it kind of hits home a little bit, and there are a lot of people that do have situations where they're on oxygen or they can't be outside or they can't be around smoking. It's like, you know, the days when you would go out, you know, that's the reason for the no smoking deal. But what would happen, what's council's feelings on if they did set a standard that you could only burn on certain days?
My feelings is that, that we, if we do that, we have just put a burden that Monty's going to have to deal with, you know, when somebody calls in the fire, well, is it the right day?
Well, I can see that.
I guess the main thing I was going with is this is here, we could do it tonight. Huh?
Not tonight, come out and bring up.
Okay, well, we could do it next meeting if we do this and we could, and I'm going off of what Mick said.
We could waste some time.
We could get something done here quickly and, and get it, we could get an advertising campaign. See, we could do that now, couldn't we?
Do you think going clear into 1:00 in the morning is, is a good idea? Well, people go to bed if fires are smoking.
Well, that's exactly, but if you remember a couple of years ago, when me and you was younger, we used to stay up till 1:00, you know what I'm saying?
And I, I also think if we enforce it, and I don't mean enforce it, I mean, everybody has to call the police and then I think there have to be a warning and then a fine. And if you start fining, you put money involved, they'll think twice before they light it. And I think that's going to help her a lot.
A serious warning, one that's written, the one that is, there's records kept on it, so the next officer who gets called doesn't know there wasn't a warning the day before.
Right, there has to be some teeth in it.
Exactly.
That is where we discuss more than anything else is having teeth and having burning specific hours which would leave other hours. Tony made a real good point to me, is you know, it's like it's Huggy Bear campground around here and if you go around town, he's exactly right, you see fires all over the town.
Oh yeah, and they smolder all night.
All the time. I'm not saying they're not cooking because I saw his neighbors cooking at 11:00 in the morning one day. They had to grill out there with a fire, a nice outfit, from what I could tell.
I think something that would help from our education, I noticed that there's a lot of things being burnt that's not seasoned wood.
And that's what we're trying to...
A lot of roofing projects and things, you know?
We're trying to get clean. If you, if you look at the, our ordinance comes from the EPA and if you read that closely, you'll see that there's, there are perimeters to how you, how big of a fire you can have. There are perimeters to the nature of the fuel, wood in this case.
Right.
And it's got to be clean, dry, seasoned firewood, otherwise it's going to create even more problems for, for people. Sheila's the same way, Sheila hates it.
Oh yeah, at the end, no burns for me, town, if I had my way.
So, but you're right, it's going to be an enforcement.
And that's an enforcement issue, like some of the things she raised about her neighbor taking his branches that blew down in the storm and taking them, obviously that's not seasoned firewood and if there's got a seven foot, you know, it doesn't matter whether he's got his hot dogs and his marshmallows out there or not.
That's never, that is a, that's a misunderstanding from the very beginning. It's never been having a hot dog in a bun because that was the same pretense I fell under years and years ago. If you read the ordinance, it's got nothing to do with food.
Right. It's preparation fire, one of which could be cooking on it.
Exactly.
Could be set down to join a campfire, like.
But Sheila on a good point, you know, education is probably the best way.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And it just can't be in the paper, it's got to be, we have to do something from the village, whether it's through mailings or something, because not everybody gets a paper, not everybody watches this on TV. It's going to, it's going to take some effort on our part to make sure everybody understands it, like water bill or something like that.
Yeah, the water bill has always been...
We can't get messages on our water bills anymore, but several years ago, we sent out a newsletter to all the residents and we could, maybe it's time to put out another newsletter type of thing to the residents.
And I was going through some, going off course just a little bit, but I was going through some old tribunes today and I saw where previous mayors had an article, a column in the paper every week. And, and that would be something that we could not only hit a regular article, but you could be double-dipping because you could, if you were to write an article like your predecessors.
Well, it'd give you something to do.
Well, I don't consider myself a writer by any means.
Anyway, I just, I think notification enforcement are going to be the two major stumbling blocks that we're going to face.
And I feel we could, we could start an education program tomorrow before anything else is passed.
Because the ordinance is already there.
Yes, exactly.
It's already there, we're tweaking it a little bit.
We have two weeks before it's going to come back to the table.
Right. What's the fine now if you get arrested, Monty?
150? I'm not sure.
I think it's 150.
I think it's 150.
150.
Yeah, it's in that range. So it's got some teeth.
Yeah, if I got fined $150.
With some minor misdemeanors, so the maximum fine's $150.
How many warnings do they get?
Most of the time when we go out on something, the people has no clue, they just moved here. And we have, you know, we have to put that out, we'll kind of let it burn out. No, you have to put it out. Water, in fact, I've done several times, you know, the property owner at home. And we, one of them wants it, we go back about the second time, we decided.
How many have we decided?
Well, we don't have too many repeat offenders. So I think, I mean, I truly believe that there's a lot of them that really don't know.
It goes back to education.
What, what committee would the mayor recommend take a look at, at writing a few things for the newspaper or?
I think the newspapers do very well on their own writing articles myself. Don't you think that they would like, be able to write an article on burning in Hicksville? I know Peter knows permission, but I know you're the boss, Jan. You guys are always very good about helping us out with articles, getting information out there, so if that satisfies you, Ron.
That satisfies me, I just really want to get something started.
We need to do something on our end. We need to notify everybody who lives in town.
Thank you for giving us a question in the right direction.
It could be a share the air campaign, I mean, I just like what Mike said, sharing the air is really a good, when you're saying, "I would like..."
It sounded like if Paul...
Yeah, but a share the air would be a great idea.
Everybody thinks it's a great idea, but nobody wants to write it.
Thank you.
But I think that's all we're wanting now, so that's what the committee wanted. End book before we have the first reading.
That's what you're going to have to do. You have so many transient residents, I'll put it that way. Getting the word to them, I think, is going to be most of the problem.
Ken and I blew book that we give to every new resident in town, does it address burning? That might be a good insert for it.
No, I'm just going to say...
They used that book to start the fire.
You should probably have something so that Dawn can give that to everybody that comes in.
Yeah, I mean, we could make it an insert in the book, by all means.
Do we want this inserted in the ordinance for the first reading or what's, kind of went around it?
I, I don't agree with everything in it. This young lady doesn't agree with everything in it, but I think it's, it's a, it's a start and I think we need to move on, on this the way it's wrote.
Okay, that's the reason I didn't want him to run the first reading, they, "Well, I don't like that," so that's the reason.
But I think if everybody else agrees that this is a start for us and then as, as we go on with an education program.
Should that be part of the ordinance? The education?
I think it should, Mike, don't you?
I'm just trying to ask you.
I mean, don't you? Yeah.
I'm trying to see why you're going to get it moving.
Yeah, keep going, but do we want the hours or we want certain days?
I think just, just as it states right here, personally, you can take a straw load on it if you want.
We'll have a first reading, if everybody in agreeance, all this is written, you want to check the whole thing.
On the committee, I was in favor of narrowing the timeframe a little bit, but I'm hoping to suggest it.
Yeah, it's really getting around there. Do it right.
By narrowing the timeframe, you're talking about 1:00, 1:00 AM?
No, no, actually, I was looking at the start time rather than the end time.
When did you want to start?
I was thinking 6:00 and then...
Bring it back?
One of the things that people brought to my attention, what if they are cooking supper and boy, I heard at home too.
So for your benefit, we better leave it alone.
Yeah. And I couldn't tell you last time somebody cooked me a meal at suppertime over a campfire, but I heard about it.
That might be a first though.
So leave it alone, you want to change the hours?
I say leave it alone.
I don't know, I guess I don't give a vote or anything, but can't people cook on grills?
Yeah.
Come on, how many people are...
Well, you're not, you're not having people burn lazy boy chairs on a grill.
Yeah.
And that's happening on campfires in our town.
And that can be addressed with what we currently have.
Yes.
I just can't see that many people are out there cooking steaks over a campfire.
Well, the lazy boy is good for that because you can always put that up and then cook the steak right there.
Yeah, that's my guess, better answer.
If you did, if you did go with a day, I mean, if you wanted to start with something, you know, definitely alcohol laws, you could say, just the burning on Sundays as well. I mean, you could, you want to start with a day, but there again, five to one in the morning is still, still good next evening, cook for your wife.
You want me to cook, huh?
But there are going to be baby steps, you can be taking maybe education, you can take an, I don't know.
Well, we have the first reading, we can suspend the rules and if anybody comes up with a better idea, we can tweak it for them. Do you want to bring it back as an emergency?
Sure.
Let's do it.
Yeah, that way we can get it over with.
But think on that, Troy, about how you could incorporate some education.
I don't know, the ordinance is about wait to burn and that's not happening, but I could put a fine in there.
What if it was like a high... Well, what if it was like a high grass, and it's each May before the May 1st of every year, the clerk has to put a notice in the paper that their weeds can't be over eight inches tall, if you did something, something like that.
What if I wanna have a weed growth in the middle of January?
No, it's just a reminder in the spring.
Well, I'm just saying.
You're doing after five.
Well, no, I'm just saying, on this one, people are gonna burn you around.
Right.
So I don't think a fancy yard would just like the weeds would cover it. I mean, I don't care that you have it on.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. So we're going on council committee reports. Are there any other committee reports? Anything anybody wants to point out or say?
The Personnel Committee, Troy, I don't know if you've seen it over there.
I didn't.
I didn't have an opportunity to speak with you, Kay. The Personnel Committee met on June 1st, and we agreed as a committee to offer our current solicitor a one-year contract at eighteen thousand dollars per year. You will see the second paragraph of my minutes suggests that the wages for the solicitor have not been raised since May 19, 2010. And in Mason, in Troy's case, he has chosen not to accept our village insurance package, which generally is what solicitors like about us. But that's what we've decided, and I would open that up as well to the full council to see if, how everybody feels about that.
And I'm assuming this wage isn't contingent upon not taking insurance?
No.
Okay.
And he hasn't had a rate, or the position, not Tom looking at it, the position hasn't had a raise in six years or so, over six years.
I thought it did, or like, got a raise three years ago.
No, it just wasn't.
'Cause he was.
We got the figures from the. And I dropped, I think that's what the figures.
Yep. I just figured everybody got that three percent.
What are you gonna do with that, Nick?
Well, I guess I ask our solicitor to bring his pay raise back in this one.
I can do that.
Unless there's other discussion.
Not taking insurance, that's a huge savings to the village.
A lot, you know. That was just a personal choice, my wife has good benefits available there, and with the continuing, you know, you're making adjustments in how much the employees have to pay, you know, try and keep it down, it makes sense at some point for me to just go over hers and get off of this one. As somebody who uses it a lot, that probably is part of the reason that it was going up.
And the other thing I think I probably should say at this point is, there's been some discussion of other departments, whether we're gonna give those other folks who have requested it raises mid-year. Troy, I think, or the solicitor position is a little bit unique. I was informed not real, real long ago, as a head of the Personnel Committee, that he had been working without a contract since 2013. I don't know why that happened, but it did, and.
And June is also the, for the, the year, that's when I started, was in June of 2006, so it's always come up in June.
Right, so that's why we're doing this mid-year, rather than going through the annual budget with it.
So we're talking about one year?
From the commencement of the new contract.
Yeah.
No, traditionally, we have, I've been here to see two years and three years.
Okay, so you want just one year?
We want one year, we had a long talk with Troy, and we just would like to extend that, and if he's willing to accept it. And that is he brings it to me as a committee.
Thank you for taking care of it. Any other committee reports? Cheryl, who are you pointing at?
Yes, I do have one.
I know, you were in trouble, weren't you?
Couple of weeks ago, we had a, last, I mean, probably three weeks ago now, we, there was a position that the Personnel Committee asked the council to create that would kind of be a jack-of-all-trades throughout the administration of the village. And Cheryl, please forgive me, I can't remember how many people applied for the job, I wanted to say eighteen or so. Twenty-eight people applied for the job, they went through all the paperwork, they came up with the three or four or five best, five best, broke it down to the three best, and the group that did the interviewing decided they wanted to hire a young lady by the name of April Allen. And I will make a motion that we would accept the, this person for this position that Cheryl recommends to the committee. She will start at thirteen dollars an hour, if memory serves me correct, as a full-time employee of the village.
I'll make the recommendation to hire April Allen, pending good drug screen, physical and background check.
I would so move me accept the mayor's recommendation.
I would second.
Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Thank you. I bet you'll be glad to get another person in the office.
Not to back, you're gonna bring back the ordinance on yourself.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
I think I'm done, right, Cheryl?
Thank you, Cheryl. Keep a mic in mind. All right, we will go on to the departmental reports. Please, Chief Ballinger. Oh, okay.
You want me to go ahead, or you want, Troy, to go ahead?
You go ahead, Mommy sent you up there.
I don't have much, I just wanna know if you're gonna bring back your pay raises as emergency ordinance?
I think we'll table that.
I just wanted to, I know we had quite a big bill for the jail for the first three months of this year. The jail fees, they went up from sixty-eight seventy-six to seventy-two oh five per day. We had thirty-eight prisoner days for the month of January, February and March, so it's part of the reason for the increase. And also, the grant that we applied for to get the countywide, the portables, we did end up getting that grant, so our department will receive fourteen portables, so.
Free of charge?
Yes. And probably a lot of yours. Fire EMS got seventeen, so.
Free of charge?
Free of charge, yep, they are, they got them in. We have to get Lieutenant Farrington, our frequency's the way we want him programmed, and we should have him a couple of weeks after he gets it done. I think they, it was purchased through vendors.
I think they're out to Lido, aren't they, then?
Yeah. Other than that, that's all that I have, so.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do Fire Chief Kramer.
I had a update in the packet that I had a question.
So at the end of all this, you never really said what you're gonna do. Are you gonna wait till you get a new truck, are you gonna rebuild a pump, what are you gonna do?
Probably, we're gonna rebuild the pump, we're gonna probably try to keep it in here. I don't have any prices on it. Maybe we're gonna do four.
Crazy.
No, we was five the last time, I know it's always been close, I just. It was closer this time than it was last time.
Thank you. EMS Chief Kessler's not here?
No.
Do you have anything to report for her?
No, I got nothing.
Okay, sorry, didn't see that. Cody, I didn't put two and two together. There is a rescue squad update for council in the packet, though, and I was just gonna ask. It says Hicksville Rescue Squad will be hosting a first responder class to be taught by Daryl Rock. We currently have seven interested students. They anticipate beginning the class in July. Are those seven interested students Hicksville firemen? Okay. Are we doing other departments also, or just Hicksville?
Um, we'll offer another department.
Okay. Thank you. Solicitor?
Can I have something first?
Mine won't be part of your.
Oh, oh, okay.
Well, I really skipped down there, then, I'm trying to get this moving over, I guess.
Yeah, I guess so. First thing I have is ordinance 2016 dash zero six, is a third reading by caption only, an ordinance restructuring the street water sewer and refuse departments of the village of Hicksville.
Do you need a motion in there?
Is that one in our packet tonight?
It's all somewhere.
I said it on the desk.
Oh, okay.
I made the motion.
That's a connection. This should just be the one that affects the street.
It adds to the labor.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay. So did we have a first, did we have a second?
I got the first.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. And I have a second reading of ordinance 2016 dash zero seven by caption only, an ordinance to levy a tax for fire protection in the village of Hicksville, directing the Fines County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors authorizing an additional tax levy for such purposes. And that, there is a tweak on that in the section one, I changed the language in there to get a little more specific, so that it was clear that if the levy gets passed, all the things that it could be used for.
And the sample wording for the ballot is on the back page, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
That's how it will read?
That's how it will read. So, and the last time on the sample wording, it said for fire services or whatever, but it was kinda general, and so we decided that the requesters, the mayor brought it up, to put in the same language, basically, that was in, that comes from the statute. But it authorizes if they wanna use it to purchase equipment, or to pay wages, or to.
Is this first reading?
This is second. And then I had ordinance 2016 dash zero eight, which is a first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section nine two one point zero three of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, to increase the minimum sewer charge and declaring an emergency. That's what came out of the special meeting about, if you look at paragraph B1, where it says effective for bills to be sent out in June 2016, which kept tells me the powers that be can be accomplished. It increased that minimum fee from the fifteen dollars back to the twenty-five dollars.
Cheryl, I think you wanted to have a little crash course on finances regarding the sewer fund.
If you raise the base rate back up, it will qualify you for the loan, it will not help the budget.
Right.
If you do the ten dollars for the usage on a thousand gallons, we're at six fifty now, if you look on the chart, you can actually see what it will cost the citizens on part B.
Good option.
Option two?
One, two.
Okay.
It's a little bit of a difference, and if you are only trying to raise it to get the loan, then what are we gonna do about the budget?
We got a couple of years to get that, is that correct?
This year's budget.
We're gonna save almost a million bucks, I thought. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars?
That's over the entire term of the thirty-year note.
Right. And we need, just so that I'm clear, when you say that on the budget, you're talking about including, like, the debt service on the loans that were gonna have to be taken? Because my understanding from before, when we passed it to reduce it back down, was because, to use former councilperson's term, I think he said, the balance, we were flush, looked like we were trying to make money on the, and then we should give some of that back to the residents, so without, I mean, I don't know, dropping it. If we put it back up, we should get back to the same point of being in the same position, I would think.
We're not going back to the full thirty-five.
Oh, it was thirty-nine, twenty-five.
What is pushing ten?
Got it.
To get almost zero.
Went from fifteen to twenty-five instead of twenty?
I mean, Cheryl foresees some difficulties, and I'm sure Kent does, too, balancing the budget with what you have here tonight.
And the other thing to consider on the usage thing, and this is the thing when you do the research on all the statutes, is the problem with upping the, trying to use the increase in the per gallon amount is, people can control that a little bit, and so that's why the flat fee was initiated by most communities to start with, is if you raise up the per gallon, per thousand gallon fee, then all of a sudden, people that were watering their yards and flowers and doing things like that, and they can't, that don't wanna pay the extra, they'll just scale back on that stuff. And so, some people will pay more, and other people don't pay the same amount or pay less. It's hard to, when you're considering budgets, it's hard to, it's hard to use that in order to balance your budget, when you don't know how the usage is gonna be.
I need a little more time to study that. If you're proposing fifty-five million bucks?
Do you wanna call the finance committee together with Cheryl, so that she can give you?
I don't wanna decide tonight, I don't, the council wants to decide.
Yeah, I mean, you can pass this tonight for loan purposes, and then two weeks from now, amend it again, if you wanted to, to increase the usage rate.
Well, that was the reason we went that direction to begin with, because we're gonna save all the money.
That was just to secure the loan.
Yeah, to secure the loan.
Right.
Hold on now.
Just so you understand that, you know, this is not going to balance the sewer budget.
This area.
But we knew that going in.
Yeah, I just. But we still have to pass this as an emergency to be able to get the zero percent.
And if I vote no, with him gone, what's gonna happen?
You won't be able to suspend the rules.
Or you won't be able, yeah, you won't be able to suspend the rules. Did you guys pay him to be gone?
You could vote yes to suspend the rules, I'm not telling you how to vote, but then vote no on the actual passing of the ordinance, and then as long as everybody else votes yes, it'll still pass as an emergency. It only takes four to pass it as an emergency, takes five to suspend the rules.
Right, yeah. No, it's not zero percent.
Point three, point five five.
Is it point three-three or point five-five?
Point five five.
As of last week.
At least.
Three by one two.
Or you pay three, four, five.
Compared to any loans I have.
So we've had the first reading.
So if somebody wants to suspend the rules, if not, we'll?
Yeah, if somebody wants to suspend the rules, then go for the second and third reading.
I'll second that, because we both agree it's wrong.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Haley made a first and second to suspend the rules. Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Beverly?
Against my will, yes.
Bentley?
Yes. So second and third reading, the ordinance 2016 dash zero eight by caption only, an ordinance amending section nine two one point zero three of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, to increase the minimum sewer charge and declaring an emergency.
Jones made a motion. Mr. Haley seconded. Roll call, please.
Beverly?
Against my better judgment, yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Next is Resolution 2016 zap dash zero five, the third reading by caption only, a resolution establishing a new pay rate for the part-time zoning inspector of the village of Hicksville, Ohio.
I don't have it on my desk, I don't see it anywhere.
That's the third reading, so.
I just wanna make sure.
So something on that.
Yes, entertain a motion to.
Get motion.
Mr. Beverly made a motion to approve that ordinance. Does anyone want to second that? McCrasky seconded. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bentley?
Yes.
Yes.
And then last, I have Resolution 2016 dash zero seven, a first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Ford Construction Company for the paving of various streets in the village and declaring an emergency. Emergency being, we gotta pass it to the county, this is. Emergency being we've got to pass it to the county, this is involved CDBG funds, and the county has to act after we do.
How long do we suspend the rules?
These are not CDBG funds that we used to park or anything? This has nothing to do with the park? This is additional work that Ward's going to do?
Yep.
Okay.
What fund is this coming out of? I notice it doesn't say that on the resolution. Kind of helps Cheryl when she knows.
Give me a second, I got to shift gears. 23.7 is coming out of infrastructure, we'll get that rebated. The other, I believe I'm taking out of capital projects paid.
Okay, all right, just so she knows what to put in there.
Double check with her.
I'm sorry, then, we also had a motion to pass that on a second?
Suspend the rules.
Sorry, just suspend those. Nick, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Crowdskeen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Second and third reading of resolution 2016-07 by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Ford Construction Company for the paving of various streets in the village and declaring an emergency.
Hold on.
Over the first and the second. Roll call, please.
Crowdskeen.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes. The other thing I have is we can wait till the end of whatever it is, like an executive session, to discuss imminent litigation.
Okay.
Just to remind you, if you can sign that squirrel, that we're paving first thing in the morning.
That'll be fine.
I have Cheryl do her thing, give me the copy so I can forward them on here.
Okay.
Does Roberto want to see the one?
Okay. Ken, do you have an administrator's report?
Nothing.
Nothing written and nothing verbal?
Nothing I'm going to say.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I skipped a couple of things on the agenda here, but I think we're back, back in order here. Cheryl, fiscal officer's report, please.
So we have your cash statement and your income tax, which is still up. The mayor's support reports are made. And I gave you some information about, from the Department of Labor, about the FSLA rule that's coming December 1st. And represent around the, really doesn't, has got a lot of the implications, so...
That's what I was going to ask you.
And I have also information about OhioCheckup.com. I don't know if you've heard of that, but you can read this and see if we want to start a new state district.
Do you want me to assign that to a committee, or do you, like, finance committee? You can talk to them about it at their meeting, okay?
All right.
I attend to some of our admin. She really questions.
Yeah, it is interesting, things you can find out on the state's website. They're trying to get all the municipalities, cities and villages to open up their records. I mean, we have pretty open records anyway, but this way they can just go on and look it up themselves.
And also, how media comes, franchise theme at four. It's on the back of their letter.
Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl about anything? Well, let's see what I have here. I would like to put out a request for plastic bags for commodities, not bags with holes in them. Your plastic grocery sacks will do. And they can be dropped off here at the water department when you come to pay your water bill.
What I begged up today for big dent in our supplies, so anything people want to get rid of, we'll take them.
You could use them right away. All right. We'll see what we can do about that. I would like to congratulate the graduating class of 2016. We hope that if they go off to college or do some running around, they'll come back to our community and settle back here. Painting around town looks great, Kent, that your guys are doing. And I would like to ask everybody's help with picking up the litter around town. We seem to have some people that enjoy just evidently throwing their trash out their car window or whatever and letting other people pick it up, but it was a bad reflection on our community, so everybody, employees, residents alike, feel free to pick up litter, you see. Does anyone else have anything from the audience? Anyone here that wants to say anything?
I have one additional thing. Justin Kuhn contacted me this morning for Hicksville. He has to get a large amount of clothing out, somebody got a church down in Compton, Dixon. And if anybody knows of any families in need or anything, just contact him. Apparently I have to have him out of there by tomorrow night.
Okay.
He said he's got almost like a semi-load, so he's...
Just to repeat that, so that hopefully people can hear it, there's a large amount of clothing that needs to be moved right away from the church on Fountain Street.
Mission 911.
Behind Klein's Grocery Store. Contact Justin Kuhn if you can use it or know somebody that needs it. It's like amounts to a semi-load of clothing that needs to be removed right away. So if you know someone that you think it might benefit, if not yourself, please let them know. Yeah, thank you, Monty. Anybody else here have anything with the...
I would ask that we go into an executive session pertaining to possible litigation.
Okay.
I got one comment on parking behind the bank. Did we officially acknowledge all that parking behind the bank?
No.
That is really nice.
Yeah. Yeah, the new parking behind the Hicksville Bank is very nice.
Sixty or seventy parking places. Eighty-two, let's say eighty-two. So I just want to thanks the Hicksville Bank. I guess public can use it, right?
No one told me. That's why I haven't said anything, I don't know. But I really want to say that the veterans program was, the Memorial Day program, the parade and everything was really nice here in our community. Everyone that was involved, they did a wonderful job with the parade and the cemetery. Karen Smith had food afterwards for a floral offering, and it was wonderfully attended, I thought. And I heard that she was very pleased with the amount of donations that were made. She's waiting for a few more that were promised and haven't come to her yet. But we thank her very much and all those that attended for helping move forward with the veterans memorial. Anything else on that?
It's, as you see, it's started, and I think the total that Karen told me was $2,680, which the fund is growing with the help of scouts and a lot of good people, which are aggressively going forward.
Okay.
And due to a lot of the efforts of the community, the goal is to have this accomplished by Veterans Day.
Correct.
Cost of project in a brochure, $175,000. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the way that Mark Homeyer, if I can do it by memory, it comes out about $167,000. So there's going to be some overrun, but with different things, we could come in under it, but we set the goal at $175,000.
And I'd like to thank the beautification committee in town. The flowers look really nice around town, and the hanging baskets look great, and they always need more volunteers, so if you have an interest in watering flowers anywhere, it's kind of by your own schedule, when you want to and how often you want to. So we will continue, we have a motion to go into executive session, and do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Baker.
Yes.
Crowdskeen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.